Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council to order Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. Councilor Kuschmerich, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Councilor Bean.
President.
Councilor Beal.
President.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deena Tally.
Here.
Councilor Green.
Here.
Councilor Joseph.
Here.
Councilor Caddy.
Here.
Councilor Kuschmerich.
Present.
Councilor Tran.
Yeah.
We now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Joe Kla.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, councilors. Robert Jokla, Assistant Superintendent Finance, School Department. I'm here tonight just to speak to items number forty-seven through fifty-one dash fifteen. Came to before the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago. It's that time of the year, not April fifteenth, but time to submit our statements of interest to MSBA. They are due this Friday. We submit them every year. This year, the priority school is Crocker. I should add, as I informed the Finance Committee, we are going out to bid for strategic facilities, long-term plan, to really look at what the use needs are of our student population going forward. So that'll be going out to bid through city purchasing sometime within the next week. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? Chief?
Good evening, councilors. Just on the beginning of the agenda tonight, our annual report of the Fire Department. Once again, very proud to submit my twentieth annual report as chief that shows the many positive things that we do in our department, thanks to dedicated employees. And as always, we set some goals and show the accomplishments of the last year that we've made possible in the city, protecting our citizens. And I just ask that all of you take twenty or thirty minutes and sit down and read it and go through it. And if there's any questions, don't hesitate to get in touch with us, and we'll try to answer any questions you have. And thank you for your cooperation over the past year.
I'll forget it.
I took twenty or thirty minutes. I didn't even get off the first ten pages. And it shut our computers down when we got it.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? All have been heard. We move to the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Green.
Yes, I'd like to report that the minutes from the last meeting are in order.
Motion to accept the Committee on Records report.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the Committee on Records report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Moving forward to the Appointments Committee. Councilor Bean.
Present the Appointments Committee net tonight. We had some new appointments and reappointments. New appointment to the Special Police Officer for the City of Pittsburgh, retired police officer Janice Rickart. That was unanimously approved. And also, we had deputy chief for water supply. That council supported the mayor's appointment of John Delain, 146 Winston Road, Royalston, Mass. Also, the Housing Development Director, Elizabeth Murphy, 219 Rowland-Haywood Road, Denver, Mass. Terms expire April 7th. The committee supported the recommendation of the mayor for that position. And the Economic Development Director, Mary Jo Bohart, 32 Porter Street, Summerfield, Mass. Terms expire April 7th, 2018. We unanimously supported that position. And Public Works, terms expire November 10th, November 30th, 2017. Lenny Lacso, the committee unanimously supported that.
Will the Committee on Report on Appointments be accepted?
Second.
Motion to second that the Appointments Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from our honor the mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I am writing to inform you that as we hereby promote Lieutenant David M. Gravel to the rank of permanent deputy chief in the Pittsburgh Fire Department effective April 7th, 2015. Lieutenant Gravel is a top candidate in the Civil Service Certification for this position. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Councilors, this is not one that we vote on, but it is an appointment by the mayor and the chief of police. And the city clerk will swear in the new permanent deputy chief of the Pittsburgh Fire Department, David Gravel.
Mr. President. Do we have to swear in the police officer?
Yes. If we could have Deputy Chief Gravel come forward. Madam Clerk, and family members, if you want to come forward to take.
Counselors, just quickly, Dave, I'm sure many of you know Dave. He's a twenty-seven-year veteran of the department. He's been a lieutenant up at the Oak Hill Station for the last eleven years. Him and his wife Kathy, who's here tonight, have done a lot of work with the Interfaith Hospitality Network. Most recently, Dave oversaw some major renovations at the Oak Hill Station, working with the students from Monty Tech over the last two seasons, and did a great job with that. He's replacing Deputy Chief Dave Russo, who I'd also like to thank for his years of service. And I'm sure Dave is going to make an excellent deputy chief. So thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Please raise your hand and repeat after me to take it off. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent deputy chief.
As a permanent deputy chief.
For the Pittsburgh Fire Department.
For the Pittsburgh Fire Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, second.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Lucas O. Bahania of 32 Jared Drive, Suite A, Pittsburgh, Mass. as a student police officer for the Pittsburgh Police Department. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Chief?
Lucas Bahania, thank you. Did you want me to speak on his behalf?
If you'd like, and then we'll send it to Appointments.
Lucas is the fourth candidate we're going to be having going to the Police Academy. His academy starts in May, May 4th, at the Reading Police Academy. He's a veteran. He's a Spanish speaker. I wasn't prepared for tonight on him, so I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
I just had Janice tonight, so.
Joel got me confused when he was asking about the swearing in.
Right.
Sorry about that.
I apologize. I wasn't prepared, Mr. Bahania.
My fault. If you can bring the special police officer forward, we'll do the swearing in. She's just got to swear.
She's going to swear.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me to take it off. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a special police officer.
As a special police officer.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
For the City of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
The honorable councilors, I hereby reappoint and ask for confirmation of Mr. James McRath of 83 Charles Street, Pittsburgh, as a member of the Board of Park Commission, for a term to expire April 1st. Sincerely, Lisa, 2020, sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby reappoint and ask for confirmation of Mr. William Walsh of 50 Prospect Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the council and aging for a term to expire January 1st, 2017. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Moving on to communications and reports from heads of departments. Counselors, we have a letter from City Solicitor Barrett here. Wait until we place them in file. We'll always use it. Very okay. We'll place this on file in the clerk's office. Thank you. And we have a second letter from Mr. Barrett regarding petition 225-14, mayoral appointments. Place them in clerk's in the files office. Place them filing in the clerk's level. And then we have other communications, a pension reserve investment management bond and the Monty Tech School preliminary budget and assessment figures. Place them on file.
Skip over a few.
Excuse me, councilors, we have a couple extra. They'll all be placed on file.
Just read right from the script.
We have a correspondence from Jeff Morosky, Deputy Commissioner of Wastewater for the proposed West Wastewater Treatment Plant, and from the Pittsburgh Retirement Board regarding the 216 budget and the Pittsburgh Retirement Board regarding the COLA meeting. Moving forward to the agenda. Special presentation, Sally Craig and School Committee Vice Chair, Ms. Seema Williams, regarding the first annual district gala. Ladies.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Anna and John. Nice to see everyone here. This is Seema Williams. The two of us have been working with a very dynamic committee to present the inaugural Pittsburgh Public School Gala Dinner. And this will be held on Saturday, May 3rd, at the high school, which will be transformed into a absolutely beautiful dining area experience. We're going to have a silent auction. We are having a wonderful dinner with steak tips. We are having music by Rosemary Reynolds and Vinnie Rodriguez and the high school band, and we have a lot of high school students who will be assisting. So, Seema, do you want to tell them a little bit maybe about the silent auction and how they can get tickets and support our schools? This will benefit our after-school program, which, as you may know, the state, in its infinite wisdom, went from partially funding to fully funding to partially funding to not funding at all. So we do have some schools that are doing some after-school programs, but it's very much in-house. And this gala dinner is a method of benefiting our kids in an after-school program. So all money will be put towards that purpose.
On the silent auction items, there'll be some large items such as the sports, baseball, Bruins, Patriots, memorabilia, along with some tickets. We have Foxwoods giving us some stuff. We have Cruise Line from Toronto Air that might be coming. So some of those are the ones that are some attractive things that people would come and take a look at. We're hoping to have a large amount of people participate in this event because it is for the children. And what we're asking is for you guys to support us with joining the forces with our committee and make this gala a beautiful thing that may continue. So right now, we're looking to have everyone here participate, anyone in the audience, anybody who's watching it will love to have you guys come, come out and support this gala. You can buy the tickets from the central office on South Street. You can also get them at the Bonus and Davin Flores on Main Street. You can also get them at Cababallissus at 165 Mass. Avenue in Ludbrook.
And we do have plenty of tickets. The tickets are $50 each, and that is for a full evening of entertainment. We have tables available. So if you'd like to buy a table, that would be eight places for $400. And we're happy to sell people tickets now. I don't want to distract you from the business of your meeting, but did want to come and really say, we appreciate being able to be part of the City Council meeting, and we hope that we'll see you there, because this is a first for us. Pittsburgh Public Schools, we have excellent programs, as you know. We hope you will come see Wizard of Oz next week at the high school, the 16th through the 18th. And our after-school programs benefit so many kids. We have a lot of working parents. We have a lot of working parents, and I know working parents in this room. So for us to have an after-school program that will serve all of our kids, it's very expensive. So we're going to do what we can with what we're able to raise. So we're happy to answer any questions, if you have any. And I'd like to thank you, President Hay, for allowing us to speak.
Thank you, and I expect that I'll see you on May 3rd.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward to the Finance Committee report. Councilor Deena Tally.
Mr. President, Council Finance Committee met last Tuesday and took up the following. 3515, an order, transfer $42,500 to information technology expenses from reserved for other municipal purposes. That was held in committee. 4315, transfer $7,000 to Assessor's Personal Services from Assessor's expenses. That was adopted. 4415, appropriate $20,000 seem to be charged against Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust and credit to accounts as follows: $10,000 to cemetery water system Phase IV and $10,000 to cemetery building and ground expenses. That was adopted. 4515, that the City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Works is hereby allowed to incur a deficit of up to $350,000 in the DPW snow and ice removal accounts for fiscal year 2015. That was adopted. 4615, transfer $30,000 to Water Personal Services overtime from water capital improvements, water system improvements. That was adopted. 4715, authorizing the superintendent of school. I'll take 4715, up to and including 5115. They were orders authorizing the superintendent of schools to submit to the Mass. School Building Authority the statement of interest dated by April 9th, 2015, for Crocker, Goodrich, South Street, Pittsburgh High, and Longstrow. And those were all adopted.
Will the Finance Committee report be accepted?
Second.
Motion to second to Finance Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll speak in motion, Councilor Kuschmerich.
I just wanted to speak with regards to 047 through 05115. Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Jokla was in front of us and just spoke to the letters of interest being submitted to the state. And Councilor Caddy had raised some concerns over the potential closing or relocation of students from Longstrow, which prompted me to follow up with Superintendent Ravenel. I had a lengthy conversation, and he assured me that there were no such plans in the short term to do any such thing, and just, again, reassured me that any such plan would require both years of planning and discussion amongst both public officials and community members. My concern there, then, the only thing that I heard out of there that I felt needed to be addressed, and I have the utmost faith and confidence in our school system to do this, but I feel, you know, maybe there's a little bit more need with all of our department heads, and this is a good reason just to speak to that, is that when we're talking about long-term strategic interests of our capital assets throughout the city, I think we need to do a better job. This isn't specific to our school system, but I think throughout our city. We just discussed BF Brown recently. There's other properties and buildings throughout the city that aren't well-maintained and that we often abandoned or reutilize. I think there's a perfect excuse just to mention that, you know, I think we need to have a conversation, you know, in the long range, talking five- and 10-year plans about our capital assets. And our Capital Commission has conversations like this, but I'm reassured by having people like our Community Development Office and our newly-appointed member of Housing and Development onboard, and I'd like for these conversations to be taking place, looking at, you know, what are these long-term needs? And, you know, if we are looking at ever, you know, moving from buildings, regardless of which ones, you know, where can we repurpose them? How can we reuse them? And what is the long-term plan so that we don't have any blighted properties, you know, remaining in the middle of residential neighborhoods? Thank you.
We have a motion to second to accept the Finance Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Counselors, we also have the 04515, the annual report of the Pittsburgh Fire Department for the calendar year 2014.
Will the reading of the report be waived?
Motion to second that the reading be waived and the report replaced on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Planning Board meeting of March 17th, 2015, 28214, Kenneth J. Matson, President of Matson's Home, Inc., to accept the portion of Parker Hill Drive from its northerly terminus at the intersection of Briarwood Drive. The Briarwood Drive as a public way, the Planning Board recommended it be granted.
Motion to accept the Planning Board recommendation.
Second.
Motion to second that we accept the Planning Board recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Works Committee, Councilor Caddy.
Public Works Committee met on March 31st. First on the agenda was 2914, Council Joel Caddy, construct the Rotary Roundabout at the corner of Electric Avenue, Roswell Street, using funds acquired by the Bavanti Corporation and using our DPW for construction. It was held in committee at that time. We had a lack of quorum. 23214, Councilor Jody Joseph, a resident of Goodfellow Drive, to accept Goodfellow Drive as a public way. After discussing this with the Commissioner of Public Works, we decided to recommend to the Planning Board to revoke the developer's bond and use these funds to complete the work on the road. 254514, Council Joel Caddy and various city residents to make Main Street a one-lane street with a bike lane on the left and ankle parking on the right from Blossom Street to Old City Hall, including parking at Monument Park for the library only. Also raised crosswalks for pedestrian safety. We voted to hold this in the committee. 29314, Council Mike Kuschmerich to repair a section of sidewalk on Marshall Street from Johnson to Simon Street. We voted to hold that petition until next month. We're going to make a site visit to look at that sidewalk. 2715, Councilor Dean Tran to remedy the drainage issue between 86 and 100 Tibbetts Circle. We also voted to hold this so we could make a site visit on the area. 5215, Council Marcus Deena Tally to inspect and provide remedy to sinking bridge just prior to 655 Mount Elam Road was granted. 5315, Council Marcus Deena Tally to inspect and provide remedy for prevention of water on off from the other side of the street onto 250 Belmont Street. Dangerous conditions are being created during the winter months, causing significant ice buildup in front of the property. It was amended to correct address to 253 Belmont Street, and also was held in the committee for a site visit.
Motion to accept the Public Works Committee report.
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept the Public Works Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Special permit public hearing, 03715, Norman St. Dennis, to reoccupy a single-family non-conforming building abandoned or not used for more than two years located at 37 Prospect Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. I declare the hearing open. Is there any person or persons representing the petitioner? They come forward and sit at the center table.
Good evening.
Do you have any comment before councilors ask questions?
Should I state my name?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Wayne Jones, 170 Mill Street, Lancaster, Mass. 01523. Basically, we're looking to reoccupy an 1870 Victorian. It's an H.M. Francis-designed home built for Henry Allison, who was the first.
President of the Safety Fund Bank.
And I guess that's about it.
Comments and questions from the councilors? Councilor Caddy.
Will it remain a single-family?
Yes.
And what's your plan? It's my understanding that you're a licensed contractor?
Yes.
Will you be occupying?
My wife and I will be, along with our family.
Will you be owning the property?
Eventually.
Eventually, we will. And you said you're a licensed contractor?
Yes, sir.
What's the plan for the renovations?
Actually, there will be no renovations. The house is practically moving ready, with the exception. See, last summer, we approached the building department and asked what we needed to do to reoccupy the property. They told us to have an electrician come in, verify the wiring, pull a permit, they would turn on the meter. We did. Had an electrician come in, pulled his permit, they gave it the meter. With the water, we asked, what do we do with water? And we hired a plumber because all of the copper piping had been stolen, you know, obviously, when it was empty. So we had a plumber come in, replaced all the piping. Plumbing inspector came in, approved it, said it was okay to turn on the water. Went to the water department, purchased a water meter, installed the water meter. Water department came in, inspected it, said it was fine. Everything's okay. We went to have the water turned on. That's when the building department said, no, you need a special permit. So as far as I could tell, the building department wasn't aware. I mean, I understand why we could get all of these permits and inspections done without the special permit to begin with. I don't know where that link was lost with the building department.
Were you able to do building construction?
No, there wasn't. Like I said, there wasn't. There are repairs. I mean, the place is in need of paint. There are other repairs that need to be done, but, you know, with the exception of running water, it's habitable. I mean, I did.
Although the building was vandalized, the plumbing mostly suffered. The interior of the building is intact, and we were able to prevent any more damage from occurring. But this is a huge problem in Pittsburgh when someone cannot live in their house, secure it, and then we have vandals going in, tearing all the plumbing out, causing all sorts of damage.
I have a question about the outside of the building. What's the plans for the outside of the building?
Well, actually, the Historical Society, I believe, is in possession of an original set of plans from H.M. Francis. So our goal is to return the home to its original state, in terms of color, exterior, look. You know, we want to bring it back to life.
Is there a lot of overgrowth there right now?
No, actually, yeah, over the past year, I've cleaned it. See, we're not allowed to do any of the repairs. You know, there are some slate shingles that need to be replaced, some, you know, some water damage and stuff, but we're not able to do any of that until we are issued a special permit.
You needed the special permit because the house was unoccupied for two years?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. And because of the, and basically because it's a non-conforming. See, from my understanding, only because it's non-conforming did we need the special permit? Or it may be because it's been vacant or abandoned for more than two years. It's a little unclear about that, you know, because the way that it's worded, it says any non-conforming structure. And what makes it non-conforming is the setback from the property line.
When did you start this project?
About a year ago, last April.
It's taken you a year to get to this meeting?
It's taken us a year, yeah. A year and a few thousand dollars, yeah, you know. But unfortunately, I mean, the house, because in October, the plumbing inspector okayed for the water to turn on. We could have gotten the water turned on. You know, we have a new gas line brought to the house. We were going to get a meter, get the heat turned on, and then the building department said, no, you can't have any of that until you get a special permit. So now, this was in October of last year, so now the house is sat there vacant all year with no heat, you know, with all the plumbing. I mean, fortunately, my wife and I go there every day, you know. We maintain the yard, we've shoveled, we, you know what I mean? We've maintained the property, but we can't do anything because our hands are tied until we get a special permit. But like I said, the building is totally habitable. I did bring, you know, after I'd spoken with the water department, they said that I couldn't have, you know, the water turned on until I spoke to the building department. I had a member of the building department, John, one of the building inspectors. I walked him through the house head to toe, and he was pretty impressed with it, but he couldn't do anything about it. It was up to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner said, it's a non-conforming structure. We need to have the survey and plot plan done. So, you know, it's been a process.
Thank you.
Sure.
I got people who want to speak, but I would just like to comment. This is atrocious, okay? They have the law on the books regarding somebody not being in the building for two years, who wants to then come back and change what the use was. We've had these before us where it was a single-family and they want to turn it into three. And that, to me, seems appropriate, that it has to come before us because there's a change in use. When it's going to be the same exact use, which is a single-family that it was before, simply because it was not occupied for two years, for it to come back before us, we've got to find some way to change that.
You know, could I also add, there's a little irony in the fact that it was the first home in Pittsburgh with indoor plumbing and hot and cold running water, and they won't turn it on.
It's the last.
You know, so there's a little irony in it.
Councilor Green.
How much money are you investing in this property?
Over course? Well, we don't have a set budget. Our plan is over the next few years to just—
We've put many thousands of dollars into it so far.
Already, yeah.
So is your goal to bring it back up to what it was originally?
It is a restoration.
Okay.
We hope to have it looking pretty much like when it was built in 1870.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
Thank you for what you're doing to that piece of property. I'm sure it's—
It was almost lost. It really was.
Just out of curiosity, how long after it was not occupied was the copper piping stolen? Do you have any idea?
I'll tell you. I was unable to live in the house after 2000 because of illness, and the house was secure. But I couldn't get anybody to do the outside, and it did get overgrown pretty badly. And then I got someone who actually worked for the city on the side to come over and take care of all the overgrowth. And the minute he took the overgrowth down, it started being attacked by young men in the city from streets surrounding, and my neighbor was one of them, the house in the front of me. And because there were no lights on in the city of Pittsburgh for so long, they were able, under the cover of darkness, to go from the house in the front of me to my house and tear out all the pipes. Nobody saw them. Nobody knew anything.
Not to mention the possessions that were stolen off the property.
A lot of the original contents of the house—
Mr. St. Dennis is the second owner.
It's just—I just—I don't know what triggers them knowing that properties are vacant, and I know this one was probably obvious, but my—the house across from me was vacant for less than one week, and the copper piping was stolen. And I just don't know if there's some kind of a notice somewhere that says, water is being shut off, or something that triggers—and I don't think it's the streetlights, I'm sorry.
I do.
I don't think it may be on the streetlights, but there's something out there triggering people to say, that house is now vacant. Because my—they didn't even—they weren't even gone a week, and the copper piping was stolen from my neighbor's house. I just don't—I just don't—
Yeah, they took the water meter and everything.
Yeah.
It triggers it.
It was bad.
But something is triggering in the city how people find out that property has become vacant and copper pipes stolen.
Councilor Dean Tally.
Score another one for government inefficiency, and unfortunately, you were the end user of it. We do a top job getting businesses here and running them through the wringer, so now congratulations, we're now doing it to residents as well. You testified that—I'm trying my best not to get upset because it's like a continuously broken record here. Every month, we get stories like this. Nothing changes. Nothing. So I want to apologize to the both of you for what you've had to go through. It doesn't do you justice, I know that. I can't give you your money back, but the fact that you went to the building office, you sought them out, not the other way around, and they waited a year to tell you, oh, you need a permit, though, is the epitome of incompetence. There's just no other way to characterize it from an objective viewpoint from my chair. There's no other excuse for it. But like I said, par for the course. So maybe it'll take another 55 or 60 instances of what you went through before we fix it. I don't know, because it's in one year and out the other. So maybe we'll try during budget sessions to get some answers, and I hope the council will grow some kind of a backbone this time and actually put some people's feet to the fire, because we sit here every week and we go, why aren't businesses and residents wanting to come here? And we get stories like this. It's not very difficult to understand why we have so much problem getting new people here and retaining them.
We have a bad reputation.
So I just—I am not trying to be negative. These are facts from the people who experience it. Someone's got to be upset about something here, because unfortunately to me, the people that do have sway here don't seem to be that upset about it. So again, my apologies. I have no problem approving this because, again, it's taking an abandoned property and it's making it productive and useful, not for a place for vandals, vagrants, prostitution, the whole works. So unfortunately, even at a get to this point, I say, let's just go forward with it. You've been through enough pain and a lot more financial pain as well. Thank you.
Councilor Bean.
Thank you. I too, like many of the councilors, Councilor Dean Tally, I'm kind of upset at the way it was treated and handled. I mean, we should be a lot more business-friendly or customer-friendly when it comes to development and that. And I too have witnessed or heard stories of similar horror stories or other people have gone through, gone through the wringer, or gone through circle to find out they're back where they were and now they have to, you know, do this. We need to have a better way of informing residents of what's required, what's necessary, what the steps are, you know. It's just the way you have to do it in order to be able to keep people in track.
It seemed to me that the front office, the building department, really—it doesn't deal with this very often, or it's not a familiar thing to them, because, you know, it seems to me that the second I went down there and said, what do we need to do? The first thing should have been—
We've had that situation before, that we have many empty buildings that have—as Councilor Hayes has talked about, so it's not anything new. And unfortunately, we have too many empty buildings that are in the same situation you have.
Many of them H.M. Francis, too.
Yeah. But lucky for us, we have you that are willing to take the effort and take the initiative and money to restore that building. And again, I apologize for the way it's happened. I wish you well on your endeavor, and hopefully you went from copper to PEX to help the situation better.
Well, we're not saying there's any copper in there anymore.
Well, we may have done the wrong thing. Anything that was historical, we left copper. Anything that was hidden, we put PEX.
I appreciate it.
But it just made it easier to steal the copper, right?
Councilor Caddy.
You are so calm about this, thank you. But moving forward, what's your understanding, once it passes the council tonight, what's next for you? Do you get that permit tomorrow morning?
Well, I think there's a 20-day grace period, but our first goal is just to get water on, you know. We'd like to have the water turned on so we can get the heating system up and running. And we've already done extensive exterior work in terms of gardening and yard work and clearing out the old brush and that sort of thing. But what we'd like to do is just give her a nice paint job, replace all the rotted wood. You know, it's all maintenance, really. There's, you know—
So if the council passes this tonight, I think we will. You have a 20-day grace period?
Yes, sir.
Then you get issued a building permit.
That is my understanding, yeah.
And then how long before, if you know, you can occupy the home?
Okay. Well, once we acquire the special permit, then we, of course, need all of the signatures before we can actually gain an occupancy permit. So really, the only work that needs to be done that would prevent the occupancy permit from being signed would be smoke detectors and CO, which will have a licensed electrician come in and do all the wiring. Once—
That's going to require hard wiring?
Exactly, yeah. Well, you know, according to Mass Building Code, you know, because of the age of the building technically, and it hasn't changed ownership, I don't believe we're required to do it. But because we lost occupancy and we now have a special permit, I think that, you know, they could justify having it. And we want to have hard-wired smokes and COs as well. I mean, it's a pretty big property, and I don't want, you know, there a fire down in the basement and we're sleeping on the second floor, you know, so.
There's four floors to the house.
Yeah, there's four floors, nine bedrooms.
Are you comfortable moving forward after going through all this? Do you see the light in the tunnel?
Oh, yes, sir. My wife—this is Kim, my wife. We want to spend the rest of our lives there, you know, so.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Councilor Dean Tally.
I just have a question about—I'm anticipating the litany of excuses we're going to get over this, because God forbid we get the truth. Is this an ordinance or a city code item, this non-conforming issue?
I believe it's an ordinance.
And this 20-day grace period, same deal?
It's not a grace period, it's an appeal period.
Appeal period. But is that dictated by the code?
That's a statute.
State statute?
Yeah, Mass law.
Both counts, the non-conforming and the—
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that it's not something on our end that we can fix quite quickly, because to me, the 20 days is for an appeal?
Yep.
Okay? Thank you.
Can I say something else?
Certainly.
This is my first council meeting, so I don't know what you can do and what you can't do. But I've been thinking about this, and I have a suggestion. I don't know if anyone here can do anything about it, but I think—and I hear from the police—that if they catch anybody stealing copper or vandalizing property, they can probably arrest them and keep them for a little while, and they're back out on the street probably the next day or two. And I don't know if either an ordinance or something could be done to say, if we catch someone stealing copper from a house, we can ban them from the city of Pittsburgh and tell them, we don't want them in the city anymore, and not allow them back. And if they do come back, something will happen to them, because they are doing it over and over again, and they're reappearing on the streets soon after.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment, Councilor Dean. There is something we could do. I believe the mistake was made the day he went into the building department to get any permit, that he wasn't handed a piece of paper telling him what the law requires of him, so on that day, he can decide if he's going to move forward. What happened to him, you heard, he got one permit. Then he got the second permit. Then he went to go get the building permit, and he was denied. He should have known that the first day he was there. So that's something we can do. I think we can speak to the building commissioner and see if we can iron this out so that people like the gentleman before us is protected and the house isn't vandalized and doesn't sit empty forever.
Counselor, while I agree with you that that is how it should have occurred, I think it's inappropriate for the council to speak to the building department and the building commissioner. That responsibility falls on the executive office.
And then we should speak into the executive office about it, because it's definitely a problem.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments from the councilors? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Mr. Walsh.
Will you come forward?
Sure. You can follow.
Should I sit?
The neighbors are all here in favor of the petition, but I think that enough hasn't been said about what's going on in the city. We've—you know, dealing with the building department in the city is horrendous. The number-one issue is make money. This gentleman here, unfortunately, lives across the street from me now, and he said, was this house ever moved? And I said, no, this is an architecturally drawn-up piece of the city by a famous Pittsburgh architect. And we did—I did give you pictures. He's been down. That's what the house looks like. And I don't know the exact amount of money he's had to pay in fees and fines. We had another issue at the bottom of the hill, 1-3 Prospect. It took over a year to straighten out, and it's like hitting your head against the wall, and that's why people leave town. And, you know, we're fortunate that he stayed here. All the floors in there have never been touched, the original floors. I've been through the house. Tom Donnelly's been through the house. Mike McLaughlin's been through the house. We talked about trying to renovate it ourselves, but we all came to the conclusion that what really had to happen is somebody had to live there and be able to work there on a continuum, move from one side of the house to the other. And he's been doing that, and it looks tremendously better than what it looked before. We've had vagrants in there when there was no power, lighting fires. We had people in there stealing Norman's antiques, right? I've been in there with five and six Cruisers sometimes. I mean, it was just horrendous. But there's very little cooperation in the city. It's bad. And you can sit here and talk about it all you want, but, you know, we're in favor of this. We've already told them that we'll give them all the help he needs. We'll go out and paint the house if we have to, because it's a detriment to the neighborhood. It's kind of insulting when you have to tell people to visit your house and come the other way, so they don't drive up past it. That's not a good thing for the city. And we're fighting it. We have another abandoned house at the bottom of the hill. Beautiful house, owned by the Housing Authority. Nobody lives in it. What the hell are we doing? They don't clean the yard. You talk to them, nothing happens, as Councilor Dean Tally said. It's very discouraging. You have some non-professional people working in that department, and if you hang around long enough and keep an eye on what goes on, you get one reading for one problem, different reading for the same problem, one fine, no fine, no permit. It's okay without a permit. It's bad. But anyway, we're here to speak in favor of it.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Bill.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Mr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Tom Donnelly. I'm a neighbor. When I heard about the problem, the situation back—I'm going to say approximately October, everything Mr. Walsh told me, I investigated. It was on the mark. Speaking as a neighbor and as a former counselor, because I was on the council when we adopted these zoning laws, I don't agree with the interpretation. I think that the single-family home, there's enough leeway there that the commissioner could have made the decision that this did not apply. And if I'm incorrect, and I don't think the council had any intent to make it this difficult for anyone to get into a single-family home—I brought a picture. It's from 1895. That house is on it. Most every house in the street still is in the exact same position. It's not changing the use, and if the wording is incorrect for the zoning and for this kind of thing, I think we should correct it. But it's not in Pittsburgh's best interest to have to—most people would have walked away, both parties. They just would give up. And I just got to commend them for all the persistence that they've had, and it's a shame, it's a tragedy for them and for Pittsburgh that it takes this long to get into a single-family house. Congratulations, and thank you for all the work that you've done, and just please take it into consideration. I think that there's enough leeway, that the commissioner has enough power to do it the way he wants, but I don't think this is the way that the council intended when it was written up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Counselor. Michael McLaughlin, for the record, actually somewhat of a neighbor, a member of the zoning board. I'm here, and maybe I could speak through the council to Attorney Barrett. I understand the determination was made based on Section 181 356 of the bylaws, which states a non-conforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protective status and be subjected to all provisions of the zoning ordinance. But if you look at Section 181 355, okay, it is titled "Nonconforming Single and Two-Family Residential Structures." And that bylaw—and Attorney Barrett, I do have some reference if you'd like to follow along with me. It states that "nonconforming single and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon the issuance of a building permit after a determination by the building commissioner that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure." And it goes on to list particular circumstances. I'm here tonight because there seems to be some regular inconsistencies with determinations that we see as residents in the city, but also as board members. There are other situations with cases that are coming before the board that are very similar, but it seems as though the determinations are not founded or using the same bylaw. And I'm here tonight because it—I don't understand, again, as everybody mentioned, why we're here, because as I just referenced to 181 355, to me, it appears as though this is a matter of right. But again, I wanted to speak to the council to try to get some feedback on understanding if the determination is correct for this particular situation. Mr. Barrett?
Mr. President, I'll try to respond, Mr. McLaughlin. I think the problem here is the fact that—
I think the problem here is the fact that it is a matter of interpretation. And the building commissioner's interpreted the ordinance as requiring, in this circumstance, a special permit to the council. From what I've heard tonight, obviously, it appears that that is not what the council thinks should be happening. And it seems as though there should be a change in the zoning ordinance. If there's an issue about the interpretation that can't be resolved, then certainly it's the prerogative of the planning board, the zoning board, or the council to request a change to the ordinance. And quite frankly, as this discussion was going on, I was writing a letter to the chairman of the planning board suggesting that the planning board take a look at this, because it does not seem like it's the intention.
And that's understandable. If I could comment. 181, 355, doesn't that specifically reference single and two-family homes in their reconstructive state?
I think that, in some respects, our ordinance mimics Mass General Law Chapter 40A, Section 6 concerning pre-existing nonconforming uses. Generally, the law says pre-existing nonconforming uses are allowed. And that any new changes in the ordinance can't be made to apply to existing structures. However, there's a further provision that says if the use or the structure is abandoned for more than two years, the municipality can adopt an ordinance to say that you can't restore it, or you can regulate it. So what we have in our ordinance is a provision that says, if it's been abandoned for more than two years, you have to get a special permit.
Gentlemen, we're getting a bit off track here. And Michael, I don't disagree with you. I think we need to change some things and make it so that this does not occur. But really, what we're doing here tonight is having a special permit thing, and residents and members of the audience get to speak either in support or in opposition to it.
And I am in favor. But again, we're here tonight because of...
We're well aware that we're here tonight because there was an interpretation, and there's a discrepancy.
Specific bylaw that pertains to what appears to allow...
Right. Thank you. In my interpretation, would have been more along the lines of yours, trust me. Anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Motion to hear him be closed. If all have been heard, we'll declare the hearing closed. Councilors, it is before you. Motion to approve. A motion to second that 37-15 be approved. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dean Tally.
I would like some kind of guidance tonight from this council, sent to the city solicitor, to review our laws. And we need... I'm afraid this is going to get lost by the wayside. We need to figure out if this is something we can correct, and not just fall back on the excuse that this is a state matter.
I guarantee you that we will work on that, Counselor.
Thank you. Because my only question on the motion, just out of curiosity, how much did it cost to get that, to get this designation? How much does it cost to submit an application for this to be...
Oh, the form, it's $300, yeah?
$300. And it was subject to interpretation? Thank you.
Motion to second to approve 37-15. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Orders Finance, 05515, order transfer of $1,047 from within Personal Services.
Move 05515 up to and including 07415, be sent to Finance.
Motion to second that 05515 up to and including 07415 be sent to the Finance Committee. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dean Tally.
Could we send this? I was hoping we could just pass these tonight. These are CDBG items that the committee already reviewed, but unfortunately, I wanted to comment on the fact that some of our recommendations were not adopted. So there's two issues here for me. Number one, I don't think it should go to Finance.
Pull the motion back.
I'm willing to rescind my motion.
Then we would need a motion for suspension.
Motion for suspension on 5515 up to and including 6215.
We have a motion for suspension. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for 05515 up to and including 06215. Speaking to the motion, Counselor... I'm sorry, Counselor Joseph.
55 through 59 are just normal routine, go to Finance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then 60 starts CDBG.
Right.
So I hope somebody could make a recommendation to send 55 through 59 to Finance and then deal with CDBG.
I will amend my motion to have 5515 up to and including 5915 be sent to Finance.
Second. Motion to second that 55 through 5915 be sent to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Motion for suspension on 60-15 to 62-15.
Motion to second for suspension of the rules on 6015, 6115, and 6215. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion 60-15 up to and including 62-15 be accepted.
Motion to second that 6015, 6115, and 6215 all be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
I'm going to make the motion that we accept the Finance Committee's recommendations on CDBGs.
Can we be specific?
63...
15.
Up to and including...
74? Second. We have a motion to second to accept the recommendations on 6315 to including 7415. Counselor Dean Tally.
I'd like to ask that 6315 be taken out, please. 6315 be separate, please.
So Counselor Joseph, you want to do 63 first? Is it a single motion on that? So Counselor Dean Tally, can we recuse himself?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? We have a motion to second to accept the recommendation on 06315. Counselor Dean Tally, thank you.
I must recuse myself? Thank you.
We have a motion to second to accept the committee's recommendation on 06315. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. You got a motion on 64 through 74?
Motion that 68... 69 through 74 be accepted.
You're skipping over... Okay, so 6...
I think those will be discussed.
Second on that, 69.
69 through 74 be accepted. Suspension.
No.
Suspension of the rules?
My counselors, it's up to you.
Motion for suspension of the rules on 6815 up to and including 7415.
Motion to second for suspension of the rules on 6815 up to and including 7415.
69, I'm sorry.
For 6915 up to and including 7415. All those in favor?
Say the motion?
All those in favor of suspension? Speaking to the motion, Counselor Kuschmerich.
I realize that there's some time sensitive things here, but I think we're moving things back and forth, going into the suspension of the rules. We're going to discuss some items. I imagine that that's what a couple of the councilors are getting at. There's a couple of items that they'd like to discuss. I think that's the perfect reason why we'd send the recommendations to Finance, address it in Finance, bring the final recommendations back before council in two weeks' time. I just, you know, I know that suspension of the rules is never, you know, an optimal way of doing things. And it's always been my understanding suspension of the rules should be done when there's not, you know, pressing matters before us that are time-sensitive.
Counselor Joseph?
The only logistics of this CDBG thing that confuses the heck out of me every time is we've already taken it from recommendation, sent it to Finance, gotten the recommendation. Now it's all on, like it's going back to Finance. And it shouldn't be going back to Finance, because it's already been to Finance. So when this comes up every time, it's a confusion as to why we would even have to do suspension of the rules, because it's not going back to Finance. It's already been to Finance. So I don't understand why it comes back as an item in the orders when it's already been addressed by the Finance Committee.
My understanding is that the Finance Committee's, when they vote on it and it went through the first time, it's simply the recommendation of the mayor and the planning board. These are now the actual orders that fund those recommendations that were made.
But we don't, we never send them back to Finance.
I'm not disagreeing with that, Counselor.
So why would we have to do suspension of the rules?
Because it's new to the agenda.
Okay.
In that form. Counselor Dean Tally?
While I understand what Counselor Kuschmerich is saying, as Counselor Joseph said, this was vetted by planning, the mayor, and then the Finance Committee. Finance Committee voted on a recommendation of a package. Full council adopted that recommendation. And then the mayor is now submitting the orders to actually go forward with actual funding for these items. So I don't think any more discussion on the merits of that is necessary. However, with all of us present tonight, I don't see any reason why we need to delay this another two weeks when we can just ask some specific questions about the mayor's items, these orders before us this evening, in contrast to what the Finance Committee recommended before. So I don't see the point in having a finance meeting on this when we're all here right now to discuss it. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Motion to second for suspension of 069 up to and including 074. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition.
Move 16. Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt 06915 up to and including 07415. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Yeah, he still has 64 through 68.
Motion to approve 6415 up to and include... No, motion for suspension of 06415 up to and including...
We have a motion to second for suspension of the rules on 06415 up to and including 06815. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition.
Motion to approve 6415 to including 6815.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the recommendation or the orders on 06415 up to and including 06815. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Dean Tally.
I just want to make it clear to everybody that this goes against the Finance Committee recommendations. We, the council passed unanimously, or majority of our recommendations, and this is not what the recommendations are. So the mayor is essentially disagrees with us. So that's her prerogative. But I just want the public to know that this set of requests level funds police and it favors all the other social service programs in deference to the police. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph? Counselor Bean?
Counselor, just a clarification. So the recommendation that the council put forth back to the mayor had reductions in...
$7,500.
Right. And that was out of the 064, 065... No, 064, 066, 067, 068, is that correct?
No. Slow down. Slow down. Thank you, councilors.
It was... Could you just explain the process?
Yes. Out of those, they took 70, a total of 7... It was a Finance Committee report which was approved by the city council at the last meeting. I don't have it in front of me, but we took money out of three of them for a total of $7,500 and put that into the police line item. Do you have what those were?
Again. I don't have the answer. Was it 064, 067, 068? Shall I show the floor?
You do, Counselor.
I believe it was 064, 067, 068. Those reduced, put money into the police. Am I correct?
I don't have the answer, because I don't have it in front of me, Counselor.
Okay.
You're saying you believe.
I'd like to just... Maybe it goes back to Finance, and maybe I don't...
Counselor Boishman?
You got the Counselor Bean's question. 064 was cut, 067 was cut, and 068 was cut.
Could you give us the amount, Counselor, if you know?
Yeah, 064 was cut $3,000.
Okay.
And the YMCA was cut $2,000.
Which number is that, Counselor?
067-15.
Okay.
And 068-15 was cut $2,500.
That's a total of $7,500.
And we got, Mr. President?
Counselor, you've got the floor, Counselor.
On these cuts, you know, I agree on one of the cuts on 068-15. And I would have liked to have seen it cut more due to the simple fact that we're supporting outside the city, not just the people of Pittsburgh. And the town of Leamster did not put any money towards this M-I-H-N. They did not subsidize any kind of money, as I looked in the paper on the back page, of their CBG funds. They didn't give them any money at all. And we're donating $10,000 here. But we're going to cut the YMCA that helps the poor kids in the neighborhood and throughout the city. And we're going to cut the United Neighborhood Center, $3,000. I call it cuts, call it what you want, $3,000, and they helped the whole city. I don't understand the logic of it. And the chief said he doesn't need the money, more money, that he wants to see it at the budget time, not now. So I'm not going to pass this part here. I'm sorry. I can't do it. It's all benefited the people of Pittsburgh, not the outsiders. And this helps the kids, and it reduces crime. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Dean Tally?
We just got done listening to two people talk about vandalism at their property. And while the police did not request additional money, that was our doing. I don't see why we shouldn't give them more money to do more foot patrol work. The reason why this came forward is not because everybody got an increase or a decrease. There was a disproportionate number of increases. The police have typically been funded at around $80,000 or $8,000 because of a domestic violence advocate position that they are no longer getting through CDBG. They're getting paid out of a separate grant. So because of that, they're now reduced from that position down to like $65,000. So essentially, when you look at the foot patrol piece of that CDBG, they were level funded. But all the other social service agencies got substantial increases percentage-wise. So my thought at the meeting, and the majority of the committee and the council as well, said, "Well, why don't we have it be more equitable?" No line item in public services for our recommendation was cut. Let's make clear what a cut means. A cut is below what they got last year. It is not, "We're going to increase some $10,000 this year, but we're going to cut it by five." That's not a cut. That's a reduction in the increase. So the Clegon Neighborhood Center would be level funded. We didn't touch the Boys and Girls Club, because that was a fixed cost with busing. And the other two organizations, we reduced their increase in half. And we gave those reductions to the police. So now, percentage-wise, the increases across the border are fairly equitable. No, the police have not asked for it, but to me, so what? I'm sure they'll find a use for that money. I mean, so this was done to bring parity to all four sections in the budget. That's all this was. This was not to cherry pick one against the other. If the police are going to get level funded, then in my opinion, everybody else should. Because to me, that signals they're not as much of a priority as the other four areas. So that was the recommendation of the Finance Committee, and that was what the council passed. And the mayor came forward and gave us orders that ignored those recommendations. So I don't know what we do going forward here, but I'm not going to vote for these. I don't know what else to, how we change it. Maybe we can't, but I'm just going to vote against them. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
I agree with Counselor Dean Tally, but one aspect we're missing is, at the age of 13 and 18 is the critical years. We're all young once, and we seem to forget that we... That's the years when we, I don't mind, causes trouble. If you ask the chief, a lot of the problems are from the young kids, not put a quote on it. And these are programs for the kids, the kids in the neighborhood. And the Clegon Neighborhood Center, which is throughout the city, is $10,000 per ward. Isn't your ward, I mean, is it Counselor Joseph's ward worth $10,000? She's helping, that neighborhood's helping his ward, and different wards of the city. And the YMCA takes care of the whole city. I can see cutting M-I-H-N. I don't want to give any more money to them. Why am I going to support the outside people? They come into our city. Why are we supporting them? Why are we giving them money, and we're not taking care of our own? That's all I'm going to say. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Counselors, I actually was the one at the Finance Committee meeting who made the recommendation to make the $7,500 in cuts to go to the police department. The committee clearly believed that that was appropriate and wanted to do it. Afterwards, I did feel... Afterwards, I did feel that I may have erred in leaving one group level-funded, the Cleggon Neighborhood Association, and reducing the increases in the other. And I actually even spoke to the mayor about it and indicated to the mayor that, you know, if she wanted to make changes in the cuts that had been made by the finance committee and then ultimately by the council, I would agree with changes that she made. I'm a little bit disappointed that she, the changes that she made was to simply ignore all of the recommendations that the finance committee and then ultimately the council made, but I will vote for this tonight and move it forward, and it is, in that way, more equitable between the two, the three other agencies that got cut in the Cleggon Neighborhood Association, the three agencies that were reduced in the Neighborhood Association that was, was level-funded. So, that's where I stand. Councilor Bean.
To the mayor?
Yep.
Madam Mayor, if the council were to go forward and make these cuts in these, which would provide you with an extra sum of money, would you then come back to the council with an order to move it to the police, or would you have, did you have other things in mind?
Well.
This is a limbo, I guess.
In making this decision, I reviewed the meeting minutes from both the city council and the planning board. The planning board had extensive hearings and allowed the organizations to speak. So, frankly, I went on the recommendations that I had based on the meeting minutes. So, based on the staff, based on my conversations with councilors, based on my conversations with some of these organizations, I decided that I would support the planning board recommendations. Frankly, I actually thought I had some leeway to do so.
I think you do.
Yeah.
You're the, you're the authority in the, I'm sorry, authority, you do. My question was that if we, the council made these cuts and that money was there, was that something, would you go along with the council recommendation and put it back into the, or put it into, not back into, put it into the neighborhood policing account?
I think it's sort of premature to tell me what I would theoretically do with the theoretical amount. Once it's cut, it kind of depends on where it's cut from. So, I think the council should make the recommendations at wishes, and I will make a decision accordingly.
We have a motion in second. Oh, Councilor Dean Talley. Oh, Councilor Catty, sorry. One second, Mike. Councilor Catty.
Last year, we put on three new police officers, two of which were, the mayor told us we're going to Main Street. However, we've had more retirements, and having been in that building as long as I have, it's going to be very difficult for the chief to put two police officers on Main Street this summer. Matter of fact, I don't even think he's going to be able to put one on Main Street this summer. Having said that, taking seventy-five hundred dollars from other departments to go into foot patrols would be a necessity, except for seventy-five hundred dollars isn't even close to putting a man on Main Street. So, I believe we're in a dilemma because a promise was made by the mayor's office to support two policemen on Main Street. The people on Main Street have been waiting for this, and now the reality is, I don't think it's going to happen. Whether we vote to take away seventy-five hundred or not, I guess isn't going to make much of a difference, but I'm very concerned about what's going to happen to Main Street this summer.
Councilor Dean Talley.
The Cleggon Neighborhood Center, if it were funded at fifty-three thousand, would be fifty-five percent of overall public service dollars from CBG. So, let's not all pretend that a three thousand dollar reduction in an increase is going to blow that whole operation out of the water. I hear, every time I hear the buzzwords, it's for the children, I get very concerned because, listen, everybody, we're not reducing this to zero. We're not reducing it by ten percent, fifty percent, it's three thousand dollars out of fifty-six thousand, and it's still over half the line item. So, let's get that fact straight right now. Number two, what are the priorities in the city of Pittsburgh right now? Is it more time dedicated to attacking hotspots, foot patrol work, or is it three thousand dollars for several programs that, for the most part, are getting increases, just not big increases? I can't stress that enough, none of these areas are getting cut. So, no one is a sacrificial lamb to the police here. It's just an equitable distribution, that's all this is. What are the priorities? I know seventy-five hundred isn't going to make or break the whole crime issue in the city, but I'm sure it will fund several hours of someone's time. That's it. We wouldn't even be having this discussion if the obvious recommendation came before us that said, you're going to get fifteen hundred, you're going to get fifteen hundred, you're going to get fifteen hundred, it's all equitable. That's not how the recommendations came forward. Police got zip, everybody got something big. Does that make sense to anybody? Doesn't to me, and I'm not going to support these. Thank you.
Councilor Boishman.
In regards to the Cleggon Neighborhood Center, since it was brought up, again, I'll repeat, they do a lot of good for a lot of people. I have been down there, and you will see the difference of the people that come into that place throughout the city. It just isn't Cleggon, it's throughout the city, and they help a lot of people, isn't it? The police department has, they have jobs and they work. Some of these people don't have jobs, and they have nothing, and they need the help so they can get it. So, three thousand dollars isn't going to make the police department any richer either, but three thousand dollars may help somebody a lot more than give us somebody overtime. That's all I have to say.
We have a motion in a second. Council. I'm sorry?
Move your question.
We have a motion in a second to approve oh sixty-four fifteen through oh sixty-eight fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Those in opposition, please keep your hands up. One, two, three, four, five in opposition. Ordinance oh seventy-five fifteen, an ordinance of chapter three, section one twenty-one of Dakota City, Pittsburgh, entitled Employment and Removal of Superintendent of Parks Playgrounds and City Forester, Additional Offices, as most recently amended by further amended by striking the word "may" in the first clause of the first sentence of said section after the word "commissioned," and by inserting in place thereof the word "will," referencing petition oh one, one oh six fourteen. Motion to send seventy-five fifteen to its first reading. Motion in second that oh seventy-five fifteen be sent to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Oh seventy-six fifteen, it's a chapter one sixty-nine, section fifty-eight of Dakota City, Pittsburgh, entitled Violations and Penalties as Most Recently Amended, be further amended by adding the following new subparaphrase to B three, Group C, as follows. A one, one, one dot one, parking being snow emergency, reference petition two, twenty-two fifteen. Motion to send seventy-six fifteen to its first reading.
Second.
Motion in second that seventy-six fifteen be sent to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion to send seventy-seven fifteen to its first reading.
Second.
Motion in second that oh seventy-seven fifteen be sent to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions, oh seventy-eight fifteen, Councilor Paul Boishman to have a "go slow" sign placed on Perkins Street off Oak Hill Road for the safety of children playing in the neighborhood.
Oh seventy-eight fifteen be sent to the public safety.
Second.
We have a motion in second on oh seventy-eight fifteen. Speaking to the motion, I will say that the petition is unnecessary. The chief of police has the authority to place these types of signs. We did that eight or ten years ago. If you wanted to go to committee, we can do that.
I'll rescind my.
Make the motion, amendment to the motion. That was going to go in chief.
I'm sorry, councilor. First, he would have to withdraw his motion. You could make a motion.
I will rescind my motion.
Council motion.
I make a motion that I withdraw this petition.
Second.
We have a motion in second to give oh seventy-eight fifteen leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Council Bean.
President, I'd like to remind the city council that the Pittsburgh Veterans Council is hosting the first annual five K run on the day of Patriots Day, which is next Monday, at the Riverfront, Riverfront Park, right after their Patriots Day services. It's five K walk and run, and the benefits go to the Pittsburgh Veterans Council.
Councilor Dean Talley.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity, I know everybody wants to leave, but I'm doing this at the request of private business owners for Twin City Air Motive. I have a letter here from one of the airport commissioners who asked me to please read this to all of you, and I'd like to submit this for the record. Dear Councilor Dean Talley, I hope this email finds you well. Marcus, you advised we could reach out to you for action on anything at the airport, and as such, I am requesting help in getting things in motion through the Pittsburgh City Council and the Purchasing Department. As you know, Hangar Seven is in need of repair in the area where the FCA was prior to moving to the terminal. I have been pushing, as well as all of the commissioners at every commission meeting to get this moving, but everything appears to stop at the Purchasing Department. The last knowledge I have on this is the weekly report all commissioners received from the airport manager Scott Ellis, which I am attaching for your perusal at the bottom of this email. Under the operation updates, you will see his comments. My understanding was that either Scott or Joe Poznick had spoken with you about your help in getting this pushed through, but according to my last discussion with Eric Steiglman, who is the business owner of Twin City Air Motive today, this is not the case, hence my reaching out to you for help. We have excellent tenants in Eric and Mark in Building Seven who always pay their bills, and for the last six to nine months have been waiting for us to do something with his building since the roof leaked and there was mold found in the building. Eric has just completed training on the Cyrus parachute system down in Las Vegas and needs the space which he cannot move into due to the roof and internals that need to be upgraded to meet code. The money has been passed by the city council for this renovation, but it has all stopped, according to my knowledge, at the Purchasing Department. Eric and Mark urgently need the roof repaired and the internals upgraded to run the new business which they have just acquired. The fear of not having their premises in good shape is that Cyrus could send one of their many inspectors to inspect their premises at any time, and they could lose the contract agreement they have with Cyrus, which will be a massive blow to not only TCA but also the city as their business is coming from many states in the USA. I guess you have already received this information from Eric and Mark, and all I am trying to do is endorse the discussion that you had with both of them. Please do what you can at the next city council meeting to bring this up and get the seriousness of this situation recognized, and this is going on ten months now. I thank you in advance, Peter Kettle, Pittsburgh Airport Commissioner. And on that note, the two business owners reached out to me this week pleading for help. They have been waiting for almost a year. Their business is being stifled, and they haven't gotten anywhere with purchasing, and Scott Ellis, the airport manager, Joe Poznick, the commissioner, have also seconded that, and they disagree with the speculative answer that it's because they didn't do the things right. They haven't even gotten able to talk to anybody over there, ten months. So, I, I'm not trying to cherry pick items. This is being brought up because the business owners asked me to, and I'm following through on that. So, I'd like to request a letter be sent by the president to the mayor's office to get a status update and to get a resolution on this because now this is not only impacting department heads, this is impacting private business owners. Another notch in our belt of business unfriendliness. Thank you.
I'll send the letter. Councilor Beazel.
Thank you. On Wednesday, April fifteenth, there'll be a Ward Five meeting at the fire station on North Street at six P.M. I hope to answer the number one question, where does all the money go? Hopefully, we'll be able to bring people through the budget and also explain how real estate taxes are calculated, and hopefully everyone leaves me alone then. I know, I'm just kidding.
Confused as we are.
So, I hope everyone can join, I think it'll be very informative, so.
Councilor Kuschmerick.
On Tuesday, April fourteenth, at five forty-five P.M., I will hold a Ward Four meeting at the, in the Anton Gallery at the Pittsburgh Art Museum. Our guest presenter will be Commissioner Laxo, discussing a series of issues, including LED conversion and how potholes are filled, among many other issues. Thank you.
Councilor Green.
Yes, I too would like to mention that a Ward One meeting will be held Thursday, May sixteenth, at the South Street Elementary School from six to seven P.M. The guest speaker this month will be the new police chief, Martino.
Council Joseph.
The Ward Six meeting, April twenty-sixth, at six thirty, at St. Bernard's Elementary School. I was going to wait until the next meeting, agenda to be determined.
We have a motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, councilors.